Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'd like to welcome you to the January 11th meeting, a regular meeting of the City Council of East Bethel. First item on the agenda is oath of office for reelected and newly elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the November 2nd, 2020 general election, Steve Voss is reelected mayor. Shelley Beck and Brian Mundell were newly elected city council. State statute 358.05 requires that each reelected and newly elected official be installed by taking the oath of office. The certificate of election has been presented to those elected members as evidence of their election to office. A copy sample of the oath of office is included in your agenda materials. This time, I will administer the oaths. Mayor Voss, if you will raise your right hand and recite the oath of office for the record.
I, Stephen Voss, do hereby solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of mayor for the city of East Bethel, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God.
Councilperson Beck, would you raise your right hand and recite the oath of office for the record?
I, Shelley Beck, do hereby solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of the city council member of the city of East Bethel, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God.
Councilperson Mundell, will you raise your right hand and recite the oath of office for the record?
I, Brian Mundell, do hereby solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of city council member for the city of East Bethel, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, and to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God.
Thank you very much. Our council members are all sworn in for their new terms.
Thanks, Jack. Any motion on the agenda tonight?
I'll make a motion to adopt the next agenda.
Second.
Suzanne's second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. On to presentations. President of our EDA, Julie Lux.
Hello. Happy New Year, everyone. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Should I just jump right in?
Yeah, just go ahead.
All right, absolutely. Well, congratulations, Mayor, and congratulations to the newly installed council members. Good luck to you in 2021. My name's Julie Lux, and I have the pleasure of serving as the president of the East Bethel Economic Development Authority. So I'm here to provide a summary on our 2020 progress of the EDA. And as a reminder, or perhaps new information for some of those watching virtually tonight, the role of the East Bethel Economic Development Authority is we serve as an advisory body to the city council. So we review and make recommendations to the council regarding marketing and promotion initiatives for our city. And we also promote business retention activities and economic development projects for both new and existing businesses. So some of the highlights for 2020. One important partner to the EDA this year has been ACRED, A-C-R-E-D, or A-C-R-E-D, or the Anoka County Regional Economic Development. So they've been a great asset to our city this year, and we've worked with Jekyll Hyder, who's the economic development specialist with A-C-R-E-D. And we leverage that work that Anoka County is doing on our behalf. So, for example, ACRED prepared a survey and completed a report that identifies the types of companies that are looking for new locations in Anoka County. And what they found is many of the end users are light industrial and manufacturer types of businesses. And 44% of those would need light industrial zone property with city water and sewer. And unfortunately, at this point in time, Bethel is limited on the lands that these types of uses are permitted. But once our comp plan is approved, staff and the EDA will be in discussions about the potential of adding more light industrial and manufacturing zoned land so we can attract these businesses to our city. Another important discussion that we've had with ACRED regarding has been regarding strategies to improve and expand our broadband and high-speed internet service and explore potential funding sources for underserved areas within our city. So ACRED, they hosted a fiber summer WebEx, which we all attended on May 13th. And we had discussions with northern Anoka County municipalities. So it was East Bethel and other northern Anoka County municipalities, which have been underserved. And they had a broadband map showing the coverage. So it was really a useful piece for us. So they're in the process of creating shared folders that list the fiber projects in the county, city by city, and what gap financing might be available for areas in our city that might be underserved. So the plan was that they'd have a resource for their community partners, such as East Bethel, which would have a speed test website, an address for so it would be a mapping application for a resident who claims to be have slower broadband or underserved with their high-speed internet. And they could do a download and speed test. But that's still in the works. So staff met with ACRED on December 11th for an update. And right now, there's a potential for a community development block grant through Anoka County to help increase services due to COVID. So staff is still exploring potential options of this program. And then, in addition, ARVIG, who's a central Minnesota company that provides business and residential services for internet and cable, they plan to install fiber on the west side of Highway 65 to, up to 237th Avenue within the next five years. So the intent of that project is to serve properties up to one mile from Highway 65. So EDA funds could be used to assist with the funding of fiber projects as long as we can show that the fiber has an effect on economic development. And that's a big priority for us in 2021, is expanding the broadband service. So other than that, here's a summary of some projects that we worked on in 2020. The Upullar parts, auto parts expansion, they've got a 12,000 square foot addition to their existing building, and they're now improving their access to Highway 65. East Village Apartments has begun phase two. So they've got grating and footings and the foundation slab. But due to weather conditions, and now that we finally have some snow, they're going to start construction on the 68-unit addition in spring of 2021. We've got a Dollar General store at 4849 Viking Boulevard that opened in October of 2020. And the initial plat for the other Dollar General store is at 209th and Highway 65, has approved by the city, and that should begin in spring of 2021. Cedar Creek Senior Living, which has been a great addition and very visible along Highway 65. They, it is complete. They had some delays due to COVID. So they opened in October of 2020, and we understand that leasing is progressing, and they're, they're working to fill up. They can preserve, there are two homes under construction in the subdivision. And at this point, 24 homes have been built in the development, and we've got 11 new permits for new single-family homes. And 22 lots remain to be developed coming up. The reduced conflict intersection update, Highway 65 and Viking. So Mindon's been working to correct signage, lane marking, paving, and sightline concerns addressed by the city. These details, they weren't recognized during the initial design phase, but after people began using it, it became pretty apparent after the operational aspect of the new, the new intersection. So they're working to repair those. They've been very responsive and cooperative in working with the city. Aggressive Hydraulics has plans, they're going to expand their facility with a 40,000 square foot addition. So this will be a $2.8 million investment and create 20 new jobs, and will bring their total employment to 85. So they're going to be requesting TIF for this project, and the city is working with them to assist in the application and support for this financing. And these TIF costs will be for infrastructure external to the building and the sewer and water access charts expansion. And the Elevage project. So earlier, early in 2020, the East Bethel City Council and Elevage, they approved their memo of understanding for this mixed-use development project to provide 70,000 square feet of commercial space and up to 150 units of higher density and multifamily housing. So the trunk water and sewer service and the frontage road are scheduled to be completed by December of 2021. And then the developer will begin first phase of this development during that time as, as the frontage road is being created. So they expect to break ground around July of 2021. So lastly, the CARES Business Relief Grant. So the city of East Bethel had an emergency small business grant relief program. So we utilized CARES Act funds to assist our city of East Bethel businesses that were suffering from disruptions due to COVID. And so the, the program provided assistance for current payroll obligations, lease or mortgage payments, utilities, accounts payable. So applications were put on the website and sent out to businesses within the city. And 198,000 was distributed to five local businesses. News to keep the businesses open and glad to see we've got the recent opening and our, our theater can reopen again, and some of our restaurants and businesses can be reopened this week. So that's really exciting. And then, in summary, we've got seven additional commercial construction projects with a permit valuation of $2 million and two commercial addition projects with a permit value of $1.3 million that were started in 2020. In total, we had 41 permits for single-family homes with a valuation of $11.1 million. And 20 of the permits were homes served by city water and sewer, which is great news. So thanks so much for your time. We look forward, the city of, of East Bethel Economic Development Authority, we look forward to continuing work with city council and to help economic growth in 2021. And I will open it up to any questions that anybody might have on sorry, I went through it kind of quickly, but that's what we've got going on for 2020.
Thanks, Julie. And before I forget to add on to your report regarding the CARES relief grants, the county just announced a new program.
Saw that.
They have additional funds. So if there's any businesses in our city that's interested, I, you know, contact the county. I'm sure it's right on the county website, so. Any questions next for Julie?
I have a question. I shouldn't know this, but somebody asked me this, and I was going to ask some, Jack, later in the meeting, but since you're here, I'll ask you. The senior building, is that 100% independent living or is some of it assisted living? Can you guys answer that for me? It was asked when I probably gave the wrong answer.
You know, I know, I don't know the exact ratios, but I know there is there are independent units and there are assisted living units, and I believe there are some memory care units as well. So I don't know what the exact ratio. Typically, in developments like this, if it was a 100-unit building, typically 40% might be independent, 50% might be assisted living, and 10% might be memory care. But I know these developers are keeping fluid because as our population ages, we're going to see more, more of a demand for memory care. So I can see that being a bigger portion of that.
Okay, thank you. That's what I answered, but I wasn't sure I was right, so I'm glad.
Yeah, I, I think the independent, they actually call it, it, it's a kind of a light form of assisted living. It's not pure independent. They have to have some services, but, but it's pretty.
I think you have to have meals.
Yeah.
Some sort.
So.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Julie or about EDA? Jack, you have a few.
All right.
I apologize. The actual number breakdown on that is 56 for the independent slash assisted living and 14 units for memory care.
Ooh, I was off a little bit, all right.
All right.
So Jack, do you know how many rooms are being used right now over there?
I understand it's currently at about one-third occupancy, but they're slowly filling it up. They don't want to rush anything. They're being very careful with the COVID issues involved. So from my understanding, it's approximately a third occupied.
Agree.
Anything else for Julie tonight? Thank you, Julie. Thanks for making the report.
Yes, thanks all. Good luck with the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Julie. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, on to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hold second. I'd like to poll item B, as in boy.
Any discussion, any other discussion? Hey, to the motion, Mr. Nelson.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Brian, item B.
For item B, that's a meeting minutes from December 28th, 2020. I was not present at that meeting, so I would like to abstain from voting on those minutes.
Hey, is there a motion from a member that was at the meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve item B on the consent agenda.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And Brian has abstained, so that motion passes. Okay, no other business. On to department reports. Our city attorney.
Item 7C1. At the December 7th, 2020 city council meeting, council discussed the need for retaining legal counsel to assist the renewal of the city's cable franchise agreement negotiations with Midco. This agreement expires on July 21st, 2020. The East Bethel has not been an attractive market for cable service providers due to the low residential density in the majority of the city. Rural dispersion of housing units has made it uneconomical for extension of service to many areas, and there remain pockets and strips in the city where no cable service is available. The city is projected to receive $67,500 in franchise fees in 2020 for Midco. There are currently 926 video subscribers in East Bethel, and this represents approximately 20% of the households within the city limits. This number has remained relatively unchanged over the past decade. Cities of Wyoming, St. Francis, Assani, Cambridge, and Lindwood Township have franchise agreements with Midco. Cities of Blenheim, Lake, and Oak Grove were provided cable service by Comcast. When our current agreement with Midco was approved in 2006, Comcast had no interest in seeking a cable franchise with East Bethel. On December 14th, 2020, Comcast notified the city that they would be unable to pursue a franchise agreement with the city for the upcoming agreement. Due to Midco's infrastructure investment and low-density development in most of the city, it was understood that there would be limited, no interest from other cable companies in East Bethel as a market. After consideration, it was a consistent of city council to request the city attorney to submit a proposal and estimate for the service. Eckbert Lammers, a law firm that provides the city attorney representation as the personnel and expertise in these matters could assist the city. Staff request city council retain the service of the city attorney to assist and guide the negotiations for the franchise agreement renewal with Midco as exhibited in attachment on the back.
Chris, you have a second. We all take a turn. You're still on mute.
Yeah, it's my turn now, so apologize about that. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jack. And Mayor and councilmembers, first, let me say congratulations and welcome to Councilmember Beck and Councilmember Mundell, and congratulations to Mayor Voss as well. Jack contacted me in advance of the, the meeting or after the meeting on December 7th to discuss the renegotiations with Midco. I understand that the contract is up in July, July 21st, and the need to get a new franchise agreement in, in place with Midco along that timeline. The contract does allow for a optional six-month extension that the city can invoke, but that would really just be to continue the negotiations to get a new agreement in place. So at Jack's request, I drafted the proposal with cost estimates and a little bit of our, about our background negotiating these agreements. And this would be just an estimate of, of what would go into renegotiations with Midco, drafting that agreement and getting it set up. And additionally, we should probably, moving forward on this, perhaps schedule a time at a workshop to further, further discuss as well before we get too far into the Midco negotiations if there are some things you'd like to see changed in your, in your agreement. But, but that, that's how we would move forward at this point with your authorization. Contact Midco and ask them to submit a proposal for franchise renewal and go from there.
Okay. So, so for this item, well, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
I'm sorry. Jack, have a question. You're on mute, but the, the funds for this, can, can we use our franchise fees to pay for this?
Absolutely. We roll those franchise fees back into the general fund budget.
Okay. I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
My question is, just to make it clear that this agenda item is just to engage Eckbert and Lammers for negotiations, no other discussion on any, anything further than that. Just wanted that clarified.
That, that's correct, Mayor and Councilmember Mundell. This, this would be for, for my firm to, to lead those renegotiations discussions with, with Midco. The, the agenda item also relates to specifically negotiating with, with Midco as, as well. It doesn't relate to anything related to Comcast or any other provider as, for the reasons that, that Jack stated.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps for benefit of Shelley, Brian, the discussion we had in December was we knew this was coming up, and then we discussed as a council whether we thought Comcast or another carrier would be interested. And I mean, the kind of the conclusion was it would just be Midco. And then the choice was whether we use Eckbert Lammers as our representation or another outside firm. And, and our decision was to get a proposal from, from Chris for this work. So that, that's kind of the background on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for, for Chris on this? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to engage with Eckbert and Lammers for franchise agreement renewal with cable companies, specifically Midco.
Hold second.
Okay, discussion. Seeing none. I'm sorry.
Are we going to try and keep the prices the same? Or will we, are we going to try to, I don't know, what, what are the plans for the fees that are going to be negotiated?
Well, first, Mayor, Mayor and Councilmember Urkel, I, I think a discussion will need to take place at the council level about what we'd like to see in an agreement. The first order of business would be contacting Midco, telling them that this agreement is coming up and asking them to submit a renewal proposal. So the, the first thing we want to get from Midco is a renewal proposal, and then there's a conversation to be had at the council level regarding any amendments or adjustments you'd like to see in, in Midco's proposal. So as soon as we receive something from Midco on that, we can get it on the agenda. In addition, we could talk about that in advance based on changes if you would like to see, if any, to the existing franchise agreement. But that's, that's really a discussion for the, the council, and we would negotiate accordingly.
Thank you. I guess my only other question is, do we have any other options?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that is the discussion we had last month. There was, there really isn't, and.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, because, you know, we're not high-density like, you know, the cities. There's, you know, companies like Comcast, they had no interest in coming in here, so.
The, the only other option we might have would be with Comcast, but that would be at a severely reduced franchise. In my discussions with Oak Grove, they get approximately $100,000 over the 15-year term of their franchise. With Midco, we get approximately a billion dollars over the term of ours.
Mayor and Councilmember Urkel and councilmembers, I should also point out that the franchise as exists is a non-exclusive franchise. So if things change over time and another carrier wants to submit an offer to have a franchise in the city, they are free to do so. The only rule is that in any type of agreement, that the agreement with the second franchise can't be better in term than it is with the existing franchise, which would require an amendment. But at, at this point, it's not exclusive, so somebody could come and make an offer. That just hasn't happened yet.
And, and they can do that anytime?
If, if they approach the city to do that, that, that is correct. But at this point, I don't believe there's been any, anybody to, to do that, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Thanks, Chris. Jack, City Minister.
Item 7G1, 2021 Commission Committee Assignments. Appointments to commission committees, authorities, and WMOs are recommended by the mayor and approved by the city council. The following are the commission, authority, committee, and appointed positions put forth by Mayor Voss for consideration. Acting Mayor. Councilperson Harrington is recommended for appointment to this position for 2021. Commission Assignments. Councilperson Beck is recommended for appointment as the council liaison to the Parks Commission and Councilperson. liaison to the Parks Commission, and Councilperson Urkel is recommended for appointment as the council liaison to the Planning Commission for twenty twenty one. Fire Department, Councilperson Harrington is recommended for appointment as the council liaison to the Fire Department for twenty twenty one. Police Department, Mayor Voss was liaison to the Police Department in twenty twenty and is recommended to continue in this capacity for twenty twenty one. Economic Development Authority, Mayor Voss and Councilperson Mundell are recommended for appointment as the council members on the EDA for twenty twenty one. Sunrise River and Upper Rum River Water Management Organizations. Councilperson Harrington has served, is the representative to these two organizations since twenty eighteen and is recommended for reappointment to both. Sand Hill Crane Committee, Councilperson Harrington has served on the liaison to this committee since twenty fifteen and is recommended for reappointment for twenty twenty one. Finance Committee, Mayor Voss and Councilperson Mundell are recommended to serve on this committee for twenty twenty one. Roads Committee, the Roads Committee has had no appointments to date. It was created with the disbandment of the Roads Commission. Two appointments to this committee can be made at the time of the needs or committee level of the project or plans. No recommendation is recommended at this time. Booster Day Committee, two council members are assigned as liaisons to the Booster Day Committee to assist with the coordination of this annual event. The full committee consists of members of service organizations and citizen volunteers. The committee meets monthly with the exception of August. The Booster Day Coordinator will update the city council at the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one meeting on the status of the Booster Day event for twenty twenty one. Appointments to this committee can be made at this meeting or upon notice that there will be a twenty twenty one event. Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Commission, Councilperson Urkel served on this commission in twenty twenty and was elected co-chairman for twenty twenty one. Councilperson Urkel is recommended for reappointment to the Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Committee. North Trunk Highway sixty five Coalition, there can be non-council members appointed to this, and the recommendations for appointment are that Councilperson Mundell and the city administrator be appointed to the North Trunk Highway sixty five Highway Coalition for twenty twenty one. For everybody's edification, council members and staff receive no additional compensation for liaison or committee appointments. Mayor Voss has recommended the appointments as listed in the previous description and in attachment one and request approval from council for these appointments.
I think we should also add that Roger Loesch is our citizen appointee to the Upper Rum WMO, and then Leon Mayger, who's also a resident and is our citizen appointment for the Sunrise River, and Leon has served in that capacity for many years. And Jack, on the Booster Day, is the Booster Day Committee meeting at all right now?
The Booster Day Committee has not yet met. We did talk with Stephanie Dorn, and I asked her to come to council to present an update to let us know what the status of the event was and what scale it may be if it's to continue again this year. I think the indication are that there will be an event, will probably be scaled down to meet COVID nineteen requirements and the short time that we have to work on. So we'll know for sure and the certain status of it in two weeks at the next meeting.
I, I don't know whatever else's thoughts are. I think just as soon we make the council appointments to the Booster Day Committee tonight, with the optimistic view that we won't have a Booster Day. And Suzanne and Tim served last year, actually the last two years. And so I'm kind of going to open the floor and see who's interested, if Tim and Suzanne are interested, anyone else?
I'd like to be on it again, and I was also, while I'm speaking, was wondering if some of these other committees, if I could be like an alternate or something, just so, especially the ones that I've never been on, like Sand Hill Crane and Fire Department and stuff like that, just because I want to learn more about those departments. So, you know, and be, just be invited to the meetings, and if I can make it, I'll go. So I don't know if that's possible, I'm just asking. So I'm on mute, and
You know, the one thing that we try to do is if us, we can't make our appointed meetings, is to let Jack know and to make sure that there is a council person at these meetings. So that's, you know, you could be the first go-to person if there's a need to fill the liaison. Was there anything in particular? You mentioned fire, and I'm not sure, well, these days I'm not sure how often they meet, but was it's a quarterly meeting, Tim, that they have?
Fire Department meets every Monday. Right now it's virtual, but if they ever get off and it's every Monday, they have some kind of training in the morning. With our council meetings, it's kind of hard to get there, but they do have a morning meeting for two hours, two hundred to eleven.
They still have the business meeting though, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's once every quarter, I think.
Yeah, I think it used to be monthly, they moved it to quarterly a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably the one I like to sit in on and just observe. So if I could get an invite to that, I'd appreciate that. And what about the Sand Hill one?
When's the last time they met?
Two years ago, Jack?
Years ago.
About two years or more, hasn't it?
I think it was three years ago when they met.
Well, thanks. Yeah, it'll be reelection time before they meet again, I'm sure. All right, thank you.
But, you know, any, you know, the thing about particularly the planning and the Park Commission meeting is, in a normal setting, not virtual, any, you know, we all attend, we just got to make sure that there isn't three council members present, that's all. So, so I think if anyone wants to attend a meeting, obviously we can watch my line now, so. But just let the liaison know, so they know. Okay, any, any other concerns or questions about the assignments?
Steve, if nobody else wants that other for Booster Days, I'll take it again. Because we got the golf tournament part of that, but that's later in the year now. We're going to move that back to September, so.
Well, it's going to stay as September?
Yeah, with the weather and that, I think everybody enjoyed the cooler weather this last year, so we're going to, we're going to do another September tenth. But I still, yeah, I enjoy Booster Days too. And I'd just like to add on, I think Suzanne got the email about from Stephanie that, you know, it might be shortened this year, it might be the same. If anybody has any ideas, they got a Facebook page, go on there and give them your ideas, because we're looking for everything, so, you know, if we don't want to do a parade, we don't want to do a dance, whatever. So we're just trying to, you know, make something out of it this year.
One thing I had about that was doing a scavenger hunt across the city to include multiple city parks. Just get residents out and around the city where parks that they may never have thought existed, they go find them, there's something there, and then everyone that does it gets some sort of prize, nothing big, but just something that seems like it might be fun, and you can obviously social distance that.
Hopefully by July, that things are much clearer and easier to manage, and we can have these celebrations, so. So Tim and Suzanne are interested. Shelley, Brian?
If they want to do it, that's fine.
All right. I'm good.
So if there's no other discussion on this, then if we could have a motion and then adding Suzanne and Tim as the Booster Day Committee.
Make a motion to approve the appointments as recommended by Mayor Voss with the addition of Mr. Urkel and Mr. Harrington to the Booster Day Committee.
Second.
Motion's made second, any discussion? You're none. Mr. Nelson, could you take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. All right.
Item seven G two, Reserve Capacity Loan Report. The City of East Bethel entered into a wastewater service rates and service charges agreement with the Met Council in twenty ten. This agreement established an annual quota requirement and set a contract schedule for the sewer availability connections, which are commonly called SAC charges. And this quota is set to increase to seventeen percent per year to amortize the cost of the Met Council wastewater treatment plant and affluent disposal system that serves the City of East Bethel. The twenty ten agreement created a reserve capacity loan that accumulates the unmet goals of the annual SAC quota over the twenty year term of the contract. Outstanding debt balance would have been due upon the expiration of the RC, of the reserve capacity loan in twenty thirty two set. In twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen, the city met, the city and the Met Council executed amendments to the original agreement. The twenty thirteen amendment allowed for modification of SAC charges if the city could work out an agreement to connect the Village Green to the city sewer system. This agreement was never able to be accomplished. The twenty fifteen amendment placed a not exceed cap of two million dollars on the reserve capacity loan. This amendment limits the city's liability to a maximum exposure for loan repayment to the twenty million dollar amount, two million dollars, excuse me. Prior to this amendment, the city could have faced the worst case scenario of a nineteen million dollar debt obligation to the Met Council in twenty thirty two. The City of East Bethel did not meet the SAC quotas for fiscal years twenty twelve through twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, there were a hundred and thirty six SAC charges connection made to the system, which exceeded the contract requirement of a hundred and eleven. In twenty twenty, there were forty one sewer access connections made, which was below the contract requirement of a hundred and thirty. As a result, the reserve capacity loan balance obligation is increased to eight hundred eighty three thousand five hundred and forty two dollars as of December thirty first, twenty twenty. The contract requirement for twenty twenty one is a hundred and fifty two SAC units. Developments in progress and anticipated single family residential growth are projected to create a minimum of a hundred SAC units this year. Continued growth in the city sewer service area will slow the rate of increase of the loan balance and delay the two million dollar limit call date until at least twenty twenty four. At that time, there will be additional reserves in the city sewer fund to assist in the loan cap repayment. There is a loan amortization agreement in place with the Met Council that allows the city to select a ten, fifteen, or twenty year payback period at a fixed interest rate of two point seven three percent to satisfy the debt. Attachment one in your packet is the current reduced capacity loan schedule through December thirtieth, twenty twenty. And attachment two is the projected reserve capacity loan report for twenty twenty one with the assumption of a minimum of a hundred SAC units for the year. This is for your information only, there's no action required, it's just to keep everybody appraised of what's going on with this loan with Met Council. We can project all kinds of scenarios out. We only did the one showing a hundred units for next year for this year, because we think we have those pretty well secured. If we get those units, then the projection of the loan cap amount will be put out to twenty twenty four before we would have to start making any payments.
Thanks, Jack. Any questions on this for Jack? Suzanne?
This seventeen percent increase, is that to the residents who are using it are going to have a seventeen percent increase in their bill? Or is that to the city who has got a seventeen percent increase? I'm a little confused on how that's worded.
If you look, if you look at the tables in the third column under SAC units, it says contract, that number that we're required to meet each year increases seventeen. So the first year we had fifty and seventeen percent increase, the next year is fifty nine, and then that keeps compounding out to the year twenty thirty. It doesn't have anything directly to do with the bill, but the number of units we're required to meet, to meet the loan.
Okay, thanks.
Say, Jack, when it goes to be paying this off in twenty three or twenty four, whenever, there is no bonding involved here, right? We, I don't want no bonding, can we make payments, or?
Yeah, we can do it a number of ways, you know, bonding's one option, but we do have a current agreement in place with Met Council that they will do a ten, fifteen, or twenty year payoff period with that two point seven three percent interest rate.
Jack, a question on the numbers. In twenty nineteen, the contract was one eleven, actual was one thirty six with a spillover of twenty five. Can that twenty five carry over to the next year, come for the next year?
No, it's just taking off the previous balance. So we were behind in that, so that reduces that number. That's why the debt on that went down from six hundred, went down from seven hundred and three thousand to six hundred and fifteen thousand. That was applied to what we had previously owed.
Okay, so the, the contract numbers are just essentially goals that we are looking to hit, and if we get far more than that, that changes the whole scenario.
That's correct. That will lower the balance that we owe and also push back that cap deadline by whatever equivalent amount it's equal to. The only problem is, is we're getting into the point where the seventeen percent increase is getting to be a significant number of SAC units per year. But the good, the good news is that when the city renegotiated this agreement, in the worst case scenario, we could have owed the Met Council up to ten times that amount. So we've been able to keep pushing that back for the last six or seven years, and it'll be at least two more years before we're faced with the payback. The more development we have and the more SAC units we connect, the less our obligation is, and ultimately, the less our payoff will be.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks, Jack. And on the staff report.
The city's outdoor ice rink at the Ice Arena is now open, so if anybody wants to go skate anytime, it'll also be open at night until ten o'clock. The Ice Arena tenants will make sure the lights are on, turn them off. The only difference between this year and last year is that there will be no warming house, and that's due to the social gathering restrictions placed by COVID nineteen. Also, our cross-country ski trails in Cedar Creek are open, they've been groomed. The report I got today is that they are in good shape. There's a few places where the snow was, the wind has blown some of the snow off, but there's about eleven miles of cross-country ski trails, so enjoy those, and we'll keep those groomed through the rest of the winter.
And notice tonight, the Ice Arena is open and being used again, which is good. Okay, council reports. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to welcome Shelley and Brian. Steve back again, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. It looks like twenty twenty one's going to be another busy year. And I'll start my report with the Fire Department. Their training today was size up and tactics. We, they set a new record for calls this year, twenty twenty one of seven hundred. They beat the old record from twenty nineteen to six eighty five, so their calls have gone up a little bit. Then last week, I had both watersheds, the Upper Rum and the Sunrise. On the Upper Rum, we ratified the twenty two budget for the city, for all the cities that involved in that, and it looks like East Bethel's going to save approximately about thirty six hundred dollars alone. We discussed the stormwater standards. We also had a discussion on the watershed plan amendment to include the new Upper Rum watershed standards. Then on the Sunrise, we're working on the twenty two budget, we still have some work to do there. And then the last thing is, we reviewed communities ordinance for And then, uh, the last thing is we reviewed, uh, communities ordinance for co- compliance with the, uh, Sunrise watershed minimums, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Suzanne?
I don't have anything except to welcome Shelley Beck and, um, Ryan Mundel to our meeting, and, uh, glad Mayor Boss is back with us, and, um, Happy New Year, I guess. Thanks.
Brian?
Uh, I just want to say, uh, I want to thank Tom Ronding and Randy Placence for their years of service. I, I know what, what takes the, the effort that gets put into this job, and, and saying that, knowing that, I'm excited to do this job for four years. So, thanks for having me, and looking forward to working with everybody.
Shelley?
Um, I have nothing, because this is all new to me, but, um, I just want to say thank you to everybody, I'm totally excited, um, I'm ready to jump in and learn as much as I can, and a bunch of you have reached out to me and told me that if I have any questions, I can ask them. Jack, sorry to ask so, so many questions so far to you, but, uh, congratulations again, uh, welcome back, Steve, and hopefully next time I will have something on the parks for you.
Okay. And I am, uh, I'm excited again for, for, look forward to another two years, as Tim mentioned, I think we're going to have a busy year, um, and which is, which is good for our community. Uh, well, I think, or, uh, welcome Brian back to council, um, and then, uh, welcome my neighbor Shelley to our, to our city council, so. Um, and, uh, with that, um, that, that's all I have, we'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
For a second?
Second.
Was that a second?
Yep.
Okay, motion made second, Mr. Nelson, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. Uh, with that, our motion passes and remains adjourned. Uh, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Good evening.
Good.